... board meeting and for today, October 22nd. We're going to go ahead and move forward with that agenda. And I'll ask the clerk to please take role of the board.
County?
Here.
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Glad I got to sneak in there.
We have a quorum. All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three, which is the only item actually on our agenda for this evening. It's approving a 28 agreement with the city of Bondurant for payment of administrating costs of the Section 8 housing finance program. It's Board Communication Number 18-532. For those of you in the audience, this is a program. We get certain Section 8 dollars. There's a deficiency in it for managing it that amounts to about $62,000. And we get reimbursement from some of our partner cities because it's a regional thing that the city of Des Moines administers. And Bondurant has agreed to come on and be part of that. And so we thank them for it. And so, so far, our partners out in the area have given us or participated in that $62,000 deficit to the tune of $23,037. So essentially, that's what this is about. Any comments by the board?
Just adding to what you said, this is on the heels of a homeland security re-upping after kind of a tough couple of years. I think the mayor and city manager and the rest of the council are doing a really good job making sure that these agreements get done and are fair to the citizens of Des Moines. So, well done, mayor. Well done, Scott. This is good.
And this what regional cooperation is about. I mean, it's all of us trying to work together and take care of the citizens from our region. So with that, if somebody give us a motion to move item three?
I'll move item three.
Item three has been moved. Any further discussion? If not, if everybody would vote, please.
Five yes.
All right. And our last item is a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourned. That was short, right? All right. So we will, we'll start our council meeting in one minute as soon as somebody else shows up. But, um, which one's that? Oh, I don't even know. To the start of our council meeting this evening, we're going to get a message of encouragement or whatever from our own council member, Linda Westergaard. Linda, would you like us to stand up at this time?
No, you can stay seated.
All right.
It's going to be a little different tonight. I just wanted to take a few minutes and talk about an event that I briefly attended on Saturday. It was the Third Annual Pre-Winter Community Car Checkup at the North High School parking lot. Nearly 400 cars were checked, tires were pumped up, fluids were filled, windshield wipers and lights were replaced, and child car seats were inspected. All of this was done with the help of the Des Moines Police Department, including the police explorers and the community ambassador volunteers, Urban Dreams, Broadlawn's Medical Center, The Guardian Project, O'Halloran International, Napa Auto Parts and Quality Services Corporation. I just want to take the time to thank the men and women of the Des Moines Police Department and to the generous sponsors who made the event a success.
All right. Linda, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's call this meeting to order. And note it's 4:31, October 22nd. And I'll ask the clerk to please take role of the council.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Here.
Right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Let me quickly say that we've, on the consent agenda, those are items three through 39. Item 4Z was withdrawn. The inspections were incomplete. The regular agenda items 40 through 59, there's, 41 is corrected, there is an ordinance. 42A was added. Councilmember Coleman wants to speak regarding concerns. Item 48B was added. Communications in objection. Item 54D is corrected. Again, it's an ordinance. Any other corrections? Seeing none, let's...
Move item two.
Item two's been moved. Everybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda. These are items three through 39. These are routine items that are generally enacted as one vote unless a council member or a member from the audience pulls off for further clarification or discussion this evening. Items 4C, 4I, 4S, 4T, 4AA. Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item five, councilmember county votes no. Item 15, councilmember Coleman wishes to speak. And item 20, councilmember Coleman wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anybody has that they would like to either pull for further clarification or discussion? Again, these are items three through 39.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item three.
All right. Item three's been moved.
Seven yes.
All right. That takes us to item 15. Item 15 is a land property transaction. It's authorization to proceed with the acquisition of necessary property interest for the Macocata Drive sewer box replacement project, Council Communication Number 18-521. Councilmember Coleman.
In the spirit of keeping the citizens apprised, this box was noteworthy after the summer rains. Councilmember Bozen, I know, peered into it, as Councilman Gray has many times over the last several years. And the mayor and I have been out to it, maybe others have been. But it made the news several times. It's a, it's an old box that desperately needs help. It's the same area where that house that was, you know, somewhat abandoned that we talked about last time, in the same area. This neighborhood needs a shot in the arm after that. And I've just, I know everybody's going to vote for it anyway, but I'm proud that we're acting on this. I think we told citizens pretty emphatically that we're going to take action, spend the money necessary to fix the problems that are there. This was a major one, and we're on to this now. So I just wanted to point it out to the citizens in case they missed it. But many, many of them have seen this on the news and in the paper, and we're going to go fix it right away.
And I just want to add, too, that that's going to start next year. They've been doing the surveying this year. They're looking at some options. You know, Macocata's a divided highway, and the sewer runs right down the middle of the median. And, you know, to try and mitigate any tree damage, they've done a pretty good job. I applaud engineering for going through and seeing what's going to be the best route there to keep that real majestic-looking neighborhood. So it's not easy. I love the work that they've proposed down there, and the neighbors will love it as well. So I support it highly.
All right. Any other comments?
You can sit down.
Mr. Coleman, do you make a motion?
Yes. Move item 15.
All right.
Seven yes.
Okay. Item 20, that's approving a reappointment of Mayor Frank County as primary member and councilmember Josh Mandelbaum as alternate members of the Des Moines Area Regional Transit DART Authority for calendar year 2019. Mr. Coleman, again.
I strongly approve these two. We have the right people representing us, so that's not the controversy. But I, I do know that DART is making some important decisions in the coming weeks about legislative matters and, and growth. Obviously, we have some regional discussions with the very same people about trying to put together a, a water system that works for all in, you know, over the next years and the next generation. At the same time, we have people talking about disbanding other groups like the CVB and pulling away or, or taking money back. And all those are complicated. I want to make sure that the council has a voice in, in all of those and to make sure that we're kind of being consistent in what we're, what we're fighting and advocating for. The DART need for growth is real, and I support that. Our citizens depend upon it. And I, I think it's, the, the real issue to me is how can we use this point in time to advance a regional model which would mean one for all instead of a federated model which says, we'll pay for and take care of our own, and you pay for and take care of the ones you want. And, and to me, I'm for a regional model. I've worried that it would break down over funding. I think the, the record on my view of that here at this table and other places was strong, that I thought we should address the funding issues first before the governance. Nonetheless, we, we have this in front of us now, and I, and I think we have to, we have to address it. And I'd just like to make sure that it gets put on a workshop agenda or something soon so that we can kind of have a open public discussion about where everybody stands on it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll move and thank, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I just have one just piece. As a, as a representative on DART, I am happy to sit down individually with any council member and go over items that have been on our agenda, budget issues, ridership issues, anything that would be helpful to share with other council members so that we're, we're all looking at the same information. I know it can be tough to, I mean, the reason we have folks representing all of us on these various regional boards and commissions is we don't all have time to dig in on these things. And I'm happy to, anyone who has interest, help bring it up to speed. I think DART is a crucial service for our community, and we need to continue to think about how we make that service work for our residents because our residents really rely on it more than any other, any other community in this metro. And so I'm happy to meet separately, one-on-one, to get you additional information so that when we do have that workshop discussion, people have as many questions answered in advance as possible.
Good comment.
I'll move item 20.
Seven yes.
All right. That completes our consent agenda. Takes us to item 40, which is ordinance's first consideration. Amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Communication Number 18-519. A is add an on-street handicap parking space, East 16th Street adjacent to 1601 East Court Avenue. B is restrict on-street parking, south side of Leyden Avenue, east of East 43rd Street. And C is the removal of parking restrictions and new parking insets on Maple Street, East Second Street, and East Fourth Street. Any comments? Anybody have any thoughts on this?
Is Jennifer here? Jennifer McCoy, Traffic?
Steve is.
Or maybe Steve? Four, I have a question on 40B, restrict on-street parking.
All right. Steve, you want to come on up?
The south side of Leyden Avenue, east of East 43rd Street. I thought our goal was to restrict parking. Right now, we have parking on both sides of the street from East 42nd to East 43rd. I thought we were taking away parking in that, between East 42nd and East 43rd.
Well, I mean, my understanding is the, when the complaint came in, that staff went out and checked the street width, and the street width does not allow for parking on both sides.
Okay.
So we're only allowed parking on one side of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't see where that includes Leyden from East 42nd to East 43rd. This says west, or says east of East 43rd Street.
Said go to 44th essentially, or something. I don't know if there was a 40.
It goes, it's a dead end.
Right.
Okay. I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that if you want to...
So that may need to be changed to west.
That's, that's what I think. I thought that was the goal, was to do from East 42nd to East 43rd.
Or...
And I think I'm the one who put the complaint in from a resident.
Right. Okay.
So it could be you want to go west of East 43rd.
Yeah. We want to go west of, I mean, east of East 42nd.
East of East 42nd.
Yes.
So it'd be all the way up to the dead end.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Anyway, if we could check that out?
Yeah.
From East 42nd, east.
Yep.
So let's pull that one until, wait for correction or not?
Yeah. Leyden Avenue on the south side from a point 140 feet west of East 43rd Street to dead end east of East 43rd Court.
So that's short of 42nd.
But that doesn't include 42nd.
To 43rd.
It should be 42nd, east.
North side, I think it's 42nd.
Correct?
Yeah, well, this is East 40th.
All right. So, Mr. Attorney, you would suggest we pull that to get it corrected and then bring it back next meeting?
That would be fine. The other option would be to approve the first reading and then have an amendment for the second reading, whichever the council prefers.
Okay.
Okay.
And could she make a, well, we want to confirm that's what we want to do, but...
Yeah, but just, as long as it's not passed, at this point, we can bring back an amendment, whatever engineering staff works out.
Okay. So with that directive, so let's maybe move it and with, and ask for any corrective language that might take her, the issue as presented.
Yes. Correct.
Within the second consideration.
Within the second consideration.
Yes. So I'll make a, a motion to move item 40, A, B, and C with an amendment to follow at a, at the future meeting.
On B? For item B?
For item B.
For item B. Okay. Unless I misunderstood something, I, I thought that was, okay.
Seven yes.
Okay. Item 41, amending Chapter 50 of the municipal code regarding floodplain regulations, Council Communication Number 18-524. Anyone in the audience want to make comment on this? Mr. Manager, any comments on this, 41? Okay.
I'll move item 41.
Item 41's been moved.
Seven yes.
Item 42. Item 42 is a request from Councilmember Gatto to speak regarding Fluor Drive reconstruction. And then we'll take A separately after that. So, Joe, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to have a, a discussion about, about Fluor Drive and the reconstruction. First off, in 2017, and I went back as far as I could on my emails. January 9th, I had an email from then-city engineer Pam Cooksey that talked about Fluor Drive and phazene timetable that we were on. It really didn't say any specifics of lane width, what we were going to do as far as that goes. And to be honest with you, even if it would have said 11-foot lanes, I probably assumed that that's what is on Fluor Drive right now. Because I've never went out on Fluor Drive and, and had a tape measure taken to it. But about a week and a half ago, the attorney that's, is a customer of mine at the restaurant for Park Fluor came in, and they have a sidewalk already on, on their property, and we're trying to do an easement or, or something with that. And she brought to my attention that we are actually shrinking Fluor Drive down by two feet on each side. Each lane width will be 11 feet instead of 12 feet. And I was just like, what? Why did we do that? Fluor Drive has an average of almost 30,000 cars a day. I went back and asked city engineer and staff to do a report of just some other construction projects that we've done. In the, just in 2014 and 2015, Southwest 9th, we did a construction project from McKinley to Porter that handles about 16,700 cars per day, and that is 12-foot lanes with a turning lane in the middle. And it has sidewalks on both sides of the street. Indianola Avenue handles about 15,900 cars from Southeast 14th to Yoder Creek. That is actually an 11-foot lane, but there's a buffer on, on each side of the road. On Indianola Avenue, from Yoder Creek Bridge to Army Post Road, which was finished last year, that's also 12-foot lanes. All of the southeast connector from Fluor Drive to Southeast 30th is all 12-foot lanes. And Fluor Drive now is an existing 12-foot lanes. That's got to be one of the highest-volume streets that we have in the city. I've, since I found this out, I've asked many people, I've went to neighborhood meetings. They're somewhat appalled that we would think about shrinking that street. And I understand SUDAS minimum requirement is 11-foot lanes. That's tight. And, and I was out on Interstate, Interstate 80 where they're doing construction right off of 86th, and there's construction there, and they, they've got it shrunk to 11-foot lanes right now on the interstate. And I was driving my van Saturday night, and there was two semis right next to me. That's really tight to have that, and it's a lot of truck traffic. Not to mention, the bypass to I-235 is, that's a main corridor that Fluor Drive is. I mean, it is used by many, many people. It's the gateway to our regional airport that we have. I just, I, I understand that we need to put sidewalks on the street, and I believe that we shall, still should continue on doing that. This has nothing to do with the sidewalks. But I haven't been able to vote on anything that's going to say 11-foot lanes. And before we go to buying property and getting easements for sidewalks and things like that, before the process goes any further, I would just like to say, slow down. Let's, let's build it right the first time. Because we only got one shot of building this street correctly. And I just want to make sure and just have a discussion with my colleagues that says, does anyone else knew it was 11 feet? And do we know that it was being shrunk two feet? And the folks that I asked, the majority of, of all of us sitting up here really didn't know that. And, and to me, that's, that's disturbing because that's something that we have to answer to our folks. So I'll let Councilman Coleman jump in. I, I guess I don't have a motion other than we need to probably have further discussions about this because I know we can't vote on it right now. But I guess I'd like to know what everyone else thinks, and if, if they knew about it, then we can have that discussion right here and right now if we, if you'd like, or we can do it in a, a work setting in the very near future. Because I don't want, first of all, not to slow the process down because Fluor Drive needs to be constructed going northbound, the, both the lanes, next year, like we promised, and then southbound going the other way. So that, you know, we're, I don't want this to be used as an excuse, but I'm also not going to vote for anything other than 12-foot lane width.
Coleman, are your comments regarding this?
Very similar. I, I learned about it. Scott was on a well-earned week away from the office, except I heard he was in the office every day. But he and I didn't have a chance to talk about it, and I wa, I wanted to join Joe and just support his comments because I do think this is important. I'm very thankful that I learned this information now. Quite honestly, had we done this reconstruction and we tightened each side of the, of the median down by, by two feet, I, I would have been really disappointed. We're talking about a project that is, in total, millions, I can't think of the full number, but it's a big number. It'll be the biggest project we do in these few years on either side, not even close. I don't want to slow it up. We've, if, if there's a, if there is a, if there's reason to slow it up, I'd like to find ways around that and, and to speed it up. It's my understanding that the current roadway, each lane is 12 feet, and by narrowing it, we create a situation that I think is pretty unique. Other places where we have this, there's often the center turn lane, like Hickman Road out by us, Bill. So you have a little wiggle room where, you know, a truck passes you, or you got to pass a truck, there's somewhere to go in. On Fluor, the only way to go in is to bang up against about a four-foot-high cement wall, which are the medians along there. There's very little give in, in this roadway. And I understand that we're trying to move towards new design standards, but I think Fluor is a very unique road, and I could make that case no matter what. But I'm also aware that a heavy residential road that was just reconstructed, I think it was a full reconstruction, 31st between I-235 and University, I think most of us can picture that, that, including the, the gutter and so forth, it's more about 13 feet on each side. So, you know, this is a, a short, you know, length of a road that has been completed within the last month or five weeks. So it's not like I'm reaching back years ago. A couple of other roads were cited. Many of you have probably driven from University to Arlington or Hickman on Second Avenue, if you can picture that. Those are, those are widths of lanes that I would never wish my 15, 16-year-old daughter to be driving on. It's dangerous and tight there, and this would mirror those tight lanes right there, which is a project I always thought that because of the traffic load, we should be finding a way to expand sometime. I'd encourage everybody to drive that on your way home tonight and to kind of see how tight lanes can be when, when you have a, a road like Fluor that takes a lot of traffic, deliveries, so forth, to that commercial area. I want to be really careful on this. Now, I also recognize that I don't want the victim to be the sidewalk. You know, we can't just solve it by saying, well, let's scratch the sidewalk. We need a sidewalk there. Josh and I have talked about it. He makes some really compelling points. But I can tell you, I'd probably rather have a, if, if we have to find two feet, right now, the plan is to build a five-foot sidewalk. I'd probably rather see the sidewalk shrink and the road be expanded back to its original level of, of lanes. And so, you know, I think we need to make a decision quick on how wide those lanes should be, and then if we need a wider sidewalk, we go to work on that, which, which I would support. I don't know how much right-of-way we're buying right now, but we got to, we got to solve this in short order.
Mr. Manager, maybe you'd like to make some, some comments and, and, you know, I hear what everybody's saying and certainly have, it's been a part of my life living off of Fluor Drive and living on the south side, and am well aware of what's going on there. But what are, what's going on with, with highways? Of course, this is a 40 mile-an-hour speed limit here. It's not 65 like out on the road like Councilmember Gatto was quoting, which could be a bit of a squeeze with two trucks and a, and a van out there. But on the other hand, I've seen roads around the country where everybody's starting to look at, how do we keep people from driving 65, 70 on 40 mile-an-hour streets, and what's safety look like, and how do we do it? And of course, looking at the successes in some of the areas where we have either reduced lanes or reduced widths, I'd, I'd like to hear the compelling argument as to what we're doing, where we're going, is this totally out of the ordinary to even make this suggestion?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers for bringing this up because I, I do not like having decisions made on partial facts and not a full understanding of what it is we're trying to accomplish. So first and foremost, there is an awful lot of variables involved in this decision-making as there is with, with just about any reconstruction, dealing with how much right-of-way we have access to and how difficult it might be to purchase additional right-of-way.
access to, and how difficult it might be to purchase additional right-of-way, whether there's sidewalks on both sides. I can go on and on. There are probably no fewer than 20 decision points, and that's why we need to have standards that we all understand. And it sounds like we have fallen short on this decision point in making sure you fully understood what was changing, what was different about this project. So, I would strongly suggest that we take the time that's necessary, that you do understand those elements. And in fact, I've looked at our schedule, and we could fit this into Monday morning's work session to get this done quickly, and that would be what my recommendation is. It is proposed, it is already designed to meet the national standards, 11 feet. There are elements within street construction that quite frankly are counterintuitive, that being that narrower lanes are actually safer. That is not something, as a non-engineer, I would've thought intuitively was the case. But it can be shown that that is absolutely the case, because the public will slow down knowing that those lanes are narrower, that there may be obstructions within the median. And so I think we need to have that full conversation with the full council, and I would strongly suggest we do that Monday morning.
So is your intention of lowering the speed on Fluor Drive also? So it won't be 40 miles an hour?
I would like to get it such that confirmation, confirmation that people are actually traveling at 40 miles an hour and not quicker than what the speed limit is posted at. You have things like an awful lot more entrance or egress and ingress off of Fluor than you would off of a southeast connector or other roadways. So, again, no less than 20 different variables when it comes to road construction, some of which are very counterintuitive. And so I fully understand why public, I myself, before I understood these things, thought that the wider the lane, the safer it was gonna be. But the reality is, people travel faster then. So, let's have that conversation. And because what I need to know and what staff need to know is, if we're gonna make an exception here to what the national standard is, which is within your purview, where else should we be projecting that change? Do we need to bring every, and we don't, I hope, bring every project to you to talk about the 20 variables that may be impacted? This is, this is unique. I think Councilman Coleman hits it right. I mean, Fluor is very unique to us, so let's have the conversation now and get an understanding of how to move forward in a consistent way.
Real quick, one question. When you say "national standards," isn't it just a minimum requirement? It's 11?
It's actually a recommendation with recommendations.
NACTO is, my understanding is...
NACTO is 10.
NACTO for an urban roadway is 10, and they actually recommend that you do not build greater than 11. So, and that's the National Association of City Transportation Officials. I'm gonna use this opportunity to...
Yeah, that's what I...
Jump in.
Jump in a little bit. And, you know, I appreciate the councilmembers raising the concern, both Councilmember Gatto and Councilmember Coleman. I think, I think this is an important discussion, not just in the context of Fluor, but for our roadways generally. And I wanna, I wanna do this in maybe two phases. One, I appreciate my conversations with both Councilmember Gatto and Councilmember Coleman, and their comments here tonight, the recognition of the importance of the sidewalks on Fluor. To me, that is a crucial part of this project and something that I don't want to get lost in this discussion. I think the neighborhoods deserve that connectivity, and they deserve these sidewalks, and this is, you know, this is something that we will be living with for years. So, I don't want that lost. Not only that, but I would, if we make decisions to change the project, I would rather have the project delayed than to lose the sidewalk piece of this, because residents have been asking for and advocating for the sidewalks in all of the neighborhood associations that are adjacent to Fluor. And to me, we need to listen to that, and we need to work towards that. I'm more than willing to have these discussions, and I'm glad that the manager has identified a Monday morning where we can have a work session to talk about this in more detail. I do want to just lay out my starting point. And I've maybe had a benefit, I think I told Councilmember Gatto that there was an email back in February talking about the lane widths, and I went back to my email and looked at that and noticed that not all of council was on that email. So I've had the benefit of maybe knowing about the lane reduction for a little longer, at least having it on my radar. But I think one of the important things when we think about the size of our roads, I have a tendency to think that in the past, we have overbuilt. We've overbuilt not just from a lane width perspective, but sometimes too many lanes. And that has real consequences. When we overbuild our roads, that means we're spending more money on concrete that we don't need, that could be used to better maintain all of our roads or be used for other priorities. And that has an impact. And just because we've done it in the past does not justify continuing to do that, particularly as we have the benefit of more data and more information and changing national standards. And so to me, the importance of those national standards, it's a way that we can better serve our citizens and do so more effectively while getting better results from a safety perspective, and then having a few more dollars to allocate to other priorities of the city. And then when you look at it further and think about how this interacts with a whole range of other pieces, there were variables that I wasn't even thinking about in February that now I realize are maybe an important piece of this too. Because when we overbuild roads, that creates, that creates perhaps unintended consequences and problems that we have to deal with. Maybe the primary example of that is the challenges that we're facing with stormwater runoff. When you have roads that are too wide, that's a lot of, a lot more runoff and a lot less land that is capable of absorbing that water. And I look at one of the examples that Councilmember Coleman gave about a road that it's actually 50 feet of right-of-way, because it's five lanes and a turning lane, and that's Hickman. And that's right in the heart of where we had some of the worst stormwater runoff problems. And if we have the ability to take off five or six feet of concrete and have that land absorbing water as opposed to all that water running off, that might be a part of another, a solution to another problem that we're dealing with. And if we continue to overbuild, we're gonna continue to find more and more places in our community where not only are we short on resources because we've got too much to maintain, but maybe we're helping create our own stormwater problems. And so I really want that to be a part of this discussion. And my hope is, I prefer not to make an exception here, but if that ends up being the direction after we've considered it more and gathered more facts, I really hope we don't lose track of the sidewalks, 'cause, you know, that to me is a really important piece of this project. But my hope is that we consider these larger elements going forward, because I think there's some real benefits to our community, to our residents and taxpayers by looking at lane width and making a transition, even if we haven't done that in the past.
So...
Sorry. I was just gonna say, Mr. Manager, I think that it sounds like maybe we can get this on a, maybe as soon as next Monday, put it on a work session and present a number of these variables that, how it affects moving forward, and how we, it may affect design of roadways, walkways, public safety, everything else that is in here, as well as some of the aspects that were pointed out here that could be environmental. But maybe what we could do, I don't know, we want to receive and file the comments, but refer them to you and the appropriate departments to follow up on work session on Monday, if that makes sense to you and you're okay with that.
So I'll make that motion. I have one question. Was the sidewalks gonna be five feet wide?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be using the same amount of concrete we would be using on the street with the sidewalk? So if we made it 12, it's still the same width, and we still have the same environmental problems, because we are still using the same amount of concrete? So I'll make the, I'll make the motion to move item 42 and refer it back to you and the departments, and we can have the workshop Monday to talk about it.
Mr. Coleman, you want to make this 42A also?
Yeah.
Yeah. All rolled together.
Go both.
Oh, I just want, before we finish, I know there were people from a couple of the neighborhood associations here. I don't know if they had an interest in speaking, but I wanted to make sure if they did that we didn't move on without giving them an opportunity as well, just to inform our discussion if they want.
And also, as they come forward, hopefully everybody that's here that's interested in this has noticed that we are gonna do this next Monday, and maybe we need to do it up there.
Yeah. Yes.
Because there might be a lot of people that are interested in having some input on this, Mr. Manager. Go ahead. Give us your name and address.
James Spiller, 4906 Southwest 18th Street. I am the president of the Watchers South Neighborhood Association, and I stood before you approximately six months ago and advocated passionately for a safer, more productive transportation system, which includes pedestrian ways and bike ways and public access points for public transit on bus lines. And I'm here to do as much again. So seeing this on the docket as a discussion item certainly raises our interest as a neighborhood. We have written a letter of support advocating for both the roadway improvements as recommended by the many planners who've already touched this, the many city staff and engineers who've already allocated probably more than a quarter million dollars of time and energy, using their professional expertise and licenses to advise and propose something to the city. We believe it would be an inordinate amount of waste of time to have them revise and redesign an engineer standard which successfully achieves a progressive, forward-thinking city. And if this slows down that process, and if this does not provide a better service for the citizens of Des Moines in all access points, pedestrian ways, roadways, public transit access points, we will vocally be against what you are threatening to do. And that seems problematic that you would say, you would threaten to do something without knowing the full extent of this report. So just to make it very clear, our neighborhood association supports the project as currently designed. We will be back to advocate passionately on Monday with more statistics and with, again, more feedback. And so just in general, I would like to say, and my children happen to be with me today as a matter of circumstance, the reason I'm making time to be here with my children is this is important, and it's important to all the families who live on the south side. We care a great deal about this. And if it's not going to, if our voice isn't going to be heard, then why are we spending our time advocating? Why are we spending our time thinking and speaking with our professional leaders and our civic leaders to make our communities better? If that falls upon deaf ears, then at a certain point, we will have an inactive and dispassionate community. And that is something we absolutely reject, and we stand behind an informed and more involved community, including the ability for my family to walk safely down the street, which we currently cannot do on this corridor. So thank you for your time, and I'll pass the mic, and I'll be sure to attend the work session without my two children.
Yeah, it'll be at 7:30, just so you know. And I want to thank you and pre-thank this gentleman stepping up now. That's what city council is all about. This isn't about partisan politics. This is about taking care of the needs of all of our citizens. And so we always ask for our citizens to make comments when they feel passionately about something. Give us some input, and hopefully we'll give you a result that is satisfactory and meets the needs, not only of yourself, but those two young people that you brought down. So, you name an address, sir.
Evan Shaw, 2615 Drewed Hill Drive. I am the past president and current board member of the Grace Lake Neighborhood Association. I just wanted to come here before council and express our continued support for the Fluor Drive project. We are excited to see that this corridor is gonna get rebuilt. We are in incredible support of having a walkable connection along Fluor Drive for the first time. And while, you know, I personally cannot comment on what is the proper road width, I would just advise that I would leave it to the design experts to tell us what is the proper standard for the speeds that we want to maintain. And I just would like to say that as long as those standards are maintained and the recommendations that the design professionals are listened to, I'm sure that our neighborhood will be in support of whatever council decides, so long as the corridor is maintained as a safe, both drivable and walkable roadway in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Doug Smith, 1512 South Lawn Drive in Des Moines. I am not a roadway expert, but I have friends that are and have favors to cash in. So what I have to share with the council are five different professional opinions just about urban road width and kind of the trend of downsizing, as Councilmember Mandelbaum shared. This does come down to nothing about sidewalks or road widths. This is about the Wakanda Country Club and sidewalks in front of that project. That is point...
In what way?
In what way? Of their ability to not allow or want sidewalks because of the T-box, trees, and easements. That's what this all comes down to.
I think that was already decided.
Yeah. That has nothing to do with this discussion that we're having right now, at all.
Actually, it does.
No, it actually doesn't, sir.
Mr. Gatto, we've had this...
Let's go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, so what it has to do is all about the Wakanda Club and sidewalks, and that's what this is about, because if we maintain the 12 feet, what the goal will be or the short end, and the easy answer is to cut sidewalks. Fluor Drive is one of the biggest thoroughfares and arteries in the city. It doesn't have sidewalks. You look at, in our neighborhood, or on the south side or the southwest side, there's nothing until you get to Southwest 9th. There's no sidewalks north of Southwest 14th past Watchers. And where I live on South Lawn Drive, between Porter and Army Post, there's just a hodgepodge of a couple of blocks. This is needed. And if you can assure me that there will be sidewalks on Fluor Drive regardless of the lane size, then Mr. Gatto and Mr. Coleman, I'll support and have that conversation.
We've both advocated for that. I've advocated for sidewalks all over the south side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Do we want to receive and file this information that he just...
Yeah, I'll move to receive and file it. Thank you for bringing it.
All right, come on forward.
Good evening, Mayor County, councilmembers. Listening to this talk about Fluor Drive...
Could you give us your name and address?
Yes, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Jerome Bradley, B-R-A-D-L-E-Y, 4605 Southwest 15th, Des Moines, Iowa, 50315. When it comes to Fluor Drive, I was born and raised in the south side. I understand Fluor Drive very well. I think that any efforts to improve its walkability and use by citizens is something that should be seriously considered. I know I spent many years as a teacher, and I've had students that have walked along Fluor Drive in areas that were not and did not have sidewalks, and it's extremely dangerous. From a safety standpoint, when you look at Fluor Drive, I have driven every type of equipment you can imagine down Fluor Drive, from automobiles, vans, pickups, tank wagons, transports. I've done it all. Fluor Drive has been a fairly safe road. At its current width, at 11-foot, I think it's, well, at its current width right now, it's safe. When it comes to speed, yes, I believe that if you narrow down the road, you narrow down that speed, and if you drive on Fluor Drive at 40 miles an hour, you will be left in the dust. People will pass you continuously. I drive it every day. But I think that when we look at something, you look at Fluor Drive, it's a beautiful pathway into Des Moines. We've built those nice center parkways. But those are also a safety hazard, because there's many places that you turn, one of them would be on Porter, where you can't see oncoming traffic. When you go to make a left-hand turn going south on Fluor Drive to go into a eastbound area, and the same goes with pretty much where those are. So when you take all these things into consideration, I think that they should all be looked at in one way or another, but I think that sidewalks are extremely important. And the one thing that I would like to say... And the one thing that I would like to say in, in support of Mr. Smith is that transparency, I think, is important. And I have heard three different comments about the sidewalks on Fluor Drive, and they all involve Wakanda Golf Club. And I understand that club very well, I was a caddy there, I was a busboy there, I grew up around that neighborhood, I used to sled in Wakanda, they always had that high fence around it, they never took care of most of it, but I've heard trees, we, we have to take out too many trees at Wakanda. But four years ago, they took out a hundred and ten trees out of Wakanda? So a few trees along Fluor Drive to put in a sidewalk and make it safe for our citizen tree? I think that's a, a small price to pay. So once again, when you take a look at these things and consider them, look at all aspects of it, and the one thing that should not be thrown on the sword is putting sidewalks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, somebody motioned to receive and file all comments, and also our recommendation to the city manager to, uh, move forward next, I think Monday, seven-thirty, yeah? I think Mr. Gatto made the motion.
I did, and I voted.
I did too, but it looks like we got cleared. So you got to vote again.
Okay.
Seven, yes.
All right, thank you all for coming down on that item. Generally, we start our hearings at five o'clock, and we've gone a little past that, it's five-eighteen, so we're going to quickly move to hearings and make note that we start them at five-eighteen. First item on hearings is item forty-eight, which is on the proposed connection fee ordinance for Little Four Mile Trunk Sewer System Benefited District, Council Communication Number eighteen-dash-five-thirty-five. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B, uh, is a communications in objection. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Anybody to speak on the connection fee ordinance on Little Four Mile Trunk Sewer? Yes, sir? If you'd give us your name and, um, address, please?
My name is Rick Olson, thirty-twelve East Thirty-first Street Court. For these purposes today, I'm talking about a piece of land that I own at, it's legally described as Lot Five in the Stephen Harvey Estates. I, um, because it was required, apparently filed written objections last Friday. The primary objection I have, and the solution to the proposed problem, is exclude from your proposed ordinance properties that adjoin to other municipalities. In my instance, I have a, a piece of land that adjoins on the, the west and on the south to the city of Pleasant Hill, in that this is supposed to benefit these individuals that own this, um, real estate in that area. It really doesn't benefit myself or anybody else that owns land that's contiguous to Pleasant Hill, and I don't, this might run out to Altoona, I don't know what the, uh, the north lot line is, because we could, if we desired, hook up to that sewer system and that particular municipality. So I'm asking, you can pass the ordinance ultimately, uh, to be excluded and any other landowner that has land that, um, adjoins a municipality other than the city of Des Moines to be excluded too.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, Ms. Manager, I'd like you to quickly, if you can, address that or have our engineering staff address that. It's my understanding that, um, while I think that it, it does refer to some fees for benefited district, if they choose not to be benefited by that sewer, they do not connect, and they would not pay, uh, any fees for being adjacent to it. However, if at some moment or another, it seemed like a good idea to have sewer rather than septic, or wait for Pleasant Hill or somebody else to bring it in from another way, you might decide you might want to get on there at some moment, and, or a future owner might, and, uh, could you kind of quickly step through that in a-
Yeah, yes.
Rather short, uh, explanation of this?
Uh, I can sure try to, Mayor, uh, thank you. Uh, so, yes, the benefited area is scientifically engineered to look at which acreage could flow into the new trunk line that's being proposed, and that has been determined, and twenty acres of your land is within that area, and, and therefore, we split up the cost on an acreage per acreage basis, but it is totally up to the property owners to decide whether or not to attach to the trunk line. You may, and in your case, you would need to, uh, build quite a bit of sewer to even get to the trunk line, so that would have to be part of your determination, but again, it's your discretion to decide whether or not to partake in this trunk, this sewer trunk line or not. The proposal, um, that I'm hearing is to exempt your property or to, uh, take you out of the benefited district.
Exempt all property that adjoins municipality other than-
So only include the Des Moines?
Yeah, if, if you adjoin Pleasant Hill, you could be exempted, if you adjoined Altoona, you could be exempted.
Right, so that-
So it's not just my property.
Right, so the results of, result of doing that would put more of the cost on to, uh, the other benefited properties, and so the twenty acres, uh, of, of fee that, that would otherwise be pertaining to your property would have to be then picked up by the other property owners. And so that, that is a, that is a decision that would also then lead to, uh, why would we exempt and leave out one property versus another? And so that, that leads down a path of, of inconsistency, so again, the fee dis, connection districts are set up to see what gravity flow would allow, uh, for that, that trunk to hold.
But as he points, he's not in Des Moines, he's in either-
Unincorporated.
No man's land unincorporated, or he may choose to go into Pleasant Hill at some moment or another.
Right.
And, uh, but, back to the original statement, he could choose not to connect-
Correct.
And not pay and stag, for instance, and, uh-
That's correct.
Stay out of it. Does that solve your problem?
It really doesn't solve the problem, and Scott, I would beg to differ with you that you'd be going, I think you, you didn't say it exactly, but down a slippery slope, because you would be laying out a, an ordinance that's very specific. If you have land that adjoins other municipalities within the benefited area, you would be exempt. You wouldn't be utilized in the formula. And you folks, and you, and by all means, by state statute, you have the authority to, uh, to spread the cost out over acres rather than parcels, something that is kind of confusing to me, that, uh, your formula is based upon acres, and it's also confusing to me that the financing piece of this, and this is just one of the ways you can finance a sewer system, uh, I mean, you could, and it's a fairly new way that you folks have been financing sewer systems, but one of the other things that I think you folks need to look at before you jump on board and, and pass an ordinance like this is the fact that there is a per annum, per acre, three and a half percent built-in interest rate, is there not, on, on all land that doesn't jump on board immediately? So in other words, my hookup fee for the house that sits on the twenty acres would be approximately forty-three, forty-four hundred dollars. I've got nineteen other acres if I parceled off an acre to go with that house. If I wanted to hook up that much land ten years from now, what would it cost me?
Thirty, thirty-five percent roughly, forty percent higher?
Every year, per annum.
Three-point-five times ten years, yes.
Per annum, that's correct.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's, and there's no ceiling on it, it runs at infinitum, does it not?
Correct, it's an inflationary factor.
But it's not tied into inflation, it's a, it's an arbitrary figure that was picked at three-point-five percent. Your loan that you're going to take out has got either ten or fifteen or twenty-year cap. Why should this money go on, the interest go on at infinitum? Why isn't it capped? I mean, it's just something that, I don't know if the council understands some of this information, you get a lot of information fed to you, just like I do in my other line of work, and sometimes it's hard to swallow unless somebody explains it to you and asks the right questions. I have a question, Scott, though. If, can the city council, if one of these benefited areas, can the city council require that that individual voluntarily allow his or her parcel to be annexed to take advantage of the sewer?
I don't fully understand that question.
All right.
Try it again.
Somebody has a piece of land within this benefited area that's adjoins a piece of city property that's already in the city limits.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Can the city council add an additional requirement that says, yes, you can sign up, you can, you can hook up, but to hook up, you're going to have to allow your piece of property to be annexed to the city of Des Moines?
I believe that's the case.
That is the case.
Yes.
So, in a way, it looks great, you've got these, the sanitary sewer coming by, but I don't know if the end game, because I don't know if the city council has been made aware of this, you folks could then require those beneficiaries to be annexed into the city of Des Moines, expanding your tax base. Is that, and believe me, the city needs to expand their tax base, don't get me wrong.
Not unless there's a sewer hookup.
Right.
But if they would hook up?
They choose to hook up.
Right, they would have to choose to hook up.
The trigger there is that you choose to hook up to the sewer.
I choose to hook up, but it's not like I just get to hook up, I'll pay you your money, you know, you've got the trump card, no pun intended.
The annexation piece?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you can hook up, but you got to allow us to annex you too.
Correct.
Correct.
But you don't have to ever hook up to the sewer? I think that was the point we were trying to make.
I understand that you don't have to ever hook up, but it, should you choose to hook up, you could be annexed as a requirement.
Yes.
All right. So I would ask that-
Be, be clear that if you're not adjacent to the city, you can't create unincorporated islands within the county, so someone could hook up potentially, they just have to waive, um, opposing any annexation at a later point in time if they're not able to annex currently.
There just happens to be a piece of dirt, thirty-two acres across from me and down about eight hundred yards, that happens to be in the city of Des Moines. It does, true, Scott?
I think I know which one you're talking about, yes.
And it hasn't been developed. So you could require the adjoining landowner to the west, you could require that they be, uh, they, that they are voluntarily annexed to enjoy the benefit of the hookup, and that could continue down the road, because then it wouldn't be an island, and then all of a sudden, it's across from my twenty acres, and you require me to do it. That's what I object to.
I think what the ordinance actually says, and we'll double check for you, but I think what the ordinance actually says is that you can't object to orderly, orderly development annexation, so it's not like, uh, there's a, uh, you, you give up your right to object to further, to, uh, uh, objecting to, to, um, annexation at a later point in time. It, it doesn't mean that you automatically annex in, or that the annexed adjacent property owner automatically annexes in.
I know, it doesn't mean that they automatically annex in, but as a requirement for you to have the privilege, the benefit of hooking up, not only do you pay the fee, but you have to voluntarily allow the city to annex you. That you don't see in those ordinance, but that's the fact. That's the law, is it not, Scott? That could occur.
In, in order to receive the sewer from the city, yes.
That's my complaint. I would ask that we defer on the ordinance and have a further discussion, even though it's just the first reading.
Actually, Mayor, that's the point I was going to make, is that this is just the first reading, and I have only had one opportunity to speak to Mr. Olson. I'd kind of like to speak more with him about this, if-
Be easier probably to defer.
Can we just continue this? Is there a timetable? Do we got to do something with this?
You're going to need three readings anyway, I guess my recommendation was to, would be to pass the first reading, and I'll have conversations with him before the second reading two weeks from now.
So my question is, are we on a time schedule? Is this have to be done within the next, by the end of the year?
This, uh, have to is a strong, this was planned to be three readings, such that on the third reading, we would actually order construction at that same third reading to get the project moving forward, so we have two more council meetings to work with.
So if we delayed it two weeks, so you can have further discussion with, with Mr. Olson?
We could waive the third reading in the end.
We can waive the third reading-
That would be another option.
And move forward with it in the same timeline.
That's the same.
That way, you can sit down with Mr. Olson, and everybody can get on the same page before we vote on anything. So I would make the motion to continue this-
First reading, okay.
Whole thing, forty-eight A and B, or wherever you want me to word it, we'll continue it, and you sit down and have discussions with Mr. Olson, and let's try to, everyone get on the same page. Would that, that, that would be my motion.
And I did, I did submit several questions, which-
Yeah, there was.
You have some in the packet, but then Scott Hutchins had sent additional, and I did email those to Rick late this afternoon.
That's correct, and thank you.
And I think some other points have come up, so I would feel comfortable deferring it also.
And if we can waive the third, then that makes sense.
Are there benefited properties that are looking forward to this sewer line coming up there that, um-
I would assume so, because I think Linda's, uh, councilwoman, Westergaard's had many conversations with desire to finish developing that part of our community.
And so there wouldn't be a reason that we would want to, uh, because of the engineering that has been done in the study around here, we wouldn't put this someplace else?
Not likely. Not likely at all.
Right, everybody kind of needs to know all that stuff as well.
Sure.
And, um, well, Mr. Olson may want to get his sewer line from Pleasant Hill at some future point. We have to, um, let's look at our-
You can have discussions with him, and then we'll vote on it next week.
He may never.
Stay right where he is.
Waive the reading, it will be the same timeline.
But future owners may want to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, for coming down.
It's always good to have you here. Thank you very much, folks.
Visit us often, thank you for stopping down. Mr. Coleman?
Seven, yes.
Item forty-nine, the conveyance of a portion of excess city-owned property at twenty-six-oh-seven Sunset Road to two-oh-five Land Investments LLC for thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. Uh, we'll open that hearing, is there anyone here to discuss this item on the conveyance of this property?
Seeing none, I'll move item forty-nine.
All right, item forty-nine's moved, any discussion? Seeing none?
Seven, yes.
Item fifty, the conveyance of excess city-owned property at fifteen-twenty-four Vermont Street to All Lines Painting Ink for twenty-six thousand dollars. Is there anyone here to discuss this fifteen-twenty-four Vermont Street? Seeing none?
Uh, hearing nothing, I will, uh, move item fifty.
All right, been moved, any discussion?
Glad to see that property going into tax rules, too.
Seven, yes.
Item fifty-one, on items regarding property at eighteen-oh-one Army Post Road. A is to amend the existing plan DSM creating R tomorrow, future, plan future land use designation from airport to community, mixed use and low-density residential. B is a hearing to rezone the property from R-one-seventy, one-family residential to limited C, two, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow the redevelopment of the property with a drive-through restaurant. C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver's requested by the applicant, and it requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open the hearing up, eighteen-oh-one Army Post Road.
You going to speak, sir? No? All right, he's leaving, all right.
Seeing no one, I'll, I'll move fifty-one, A, B, C, and D.
All right. All right.
Seven, yes.
Item 52 on a request from HRC 8th Street Owner to rezone 813 Crocker Street from R 4 multi-family residential to C 3A Central Business District Support Commercial to allow for freestanding monument sign for the existing multi-family residential complex. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver's requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item?
Seeing no one, I'll move 52A and B.
Item 53 regarding a request from 50th and Douglas LLC to rezone property located in the vicinity of 3905 50th Street from R 160, one-family low-density residential to PUD planned unit development, and for approval of a PUD conceptual plan, Beaverdale Town Homes for development of approximately 2.74 acres for 21 rowhouse, one-story town homes on a private drive accessed from 50th Street, subject to conditions, and to continue to December 17, 2018 at 5:00 PM. Anybody here to speak to this? This is motion actually to continue to December 17. And, Mr. Manager, I think it'd really be a good idea, having heard some of the conversations with P and Z, and also with the individual wanting to develop this, if engineering would take a look at that 2.7 acres and, given the events around-
Exactly.
-June 30, whether or not this is really an appropriate thing to happen here. I worry about the 21 owners.
And I think Councilman Coleman and I have been on top of this. I appreciate both of us getting updates on that, as this goes before it comes back to us on the 17th.
You agree?
I agree.
And so, I can have our engineering staff give you what we understand the property development to look like from a stormwater sense, but they were asked to also do that, so I, I don't know that that has occurred at this point, to have a private.
Okay.
So, let me check on that.
Just given all the stuff that happened in what looks to be sort of a trending, extreme event kind of incident-
Because that, right down the street there, 50th and Madison, there was so much water pressure, it tore off sheets of asphalt and poured it down towards Hoover High, so we want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Oh, boy, I agree with it.
And I, I just might add, the developer is somebody I respect a lot, and if the analysis is that this is going to be hard to develop with this many rooftops, or whatever it is, it would be great that we learned that earlier in the process than later, so nobody is wasting any money. I mean, I, I want to advocate for him that we're as predictable as we can be, and, and just not let it lallygag until the 11th hour, when they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to try and do this. Absolutely, right. And he, he spent a lot of time trying to assemble that property, and there, there's not too many 2.7 acres of land assembled in northwest Des Moines, so it'd be great, but I know it has its restrictions, and we ought to be predicted, predictive on it. So, if that, I'll move item 53.
And I agree with, with everybody on that. I just, I'm worried about those 21 owners.
Seven, yes.
Item 54, items regarding designation of the Southwest Gateway Urban Renewal Area. A is communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and B is resolution of necessity for the Southwest Gateway Urban Renewal Area. C is a resolution closing the hearing on the proposed Southwest Gateway Urban Renewal Plan and adopting the same council communication number 18-514. D is the first consideration of the ordinance designating the Southwest Gateway Urban Renewal Area as a tax increment financing TIF district and providing for the division of property tax revenues. And E is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by the Economic Development Department Director, and requires six votes. Let's open the hearing on this item. Is there anyone here to talk about the Southwest Gateway Urban Renewal Area?
Seeing none, I'll move item 54, A, B, C, D, and E.
55 on the proposed First Amendment to the Urban Renewal Development for the Forest Avenue Urban Renewal Area, council communication number 18-513. Anyone here to speak to this item, the Forest Avenue Urban Renewal Area? Anyone? All right. Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, it's, this is more of a clarification on an amendment, but I just want to let everybody know, keep your eyes open. We're going to have some great things happening down there on Forest Avenue. So, strap yourselves in, and you're, we're going to go for a ride.
All right.
With that, I'll move 55.
Seven, yes.
56 on the proposed 23rd Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Area, council communication number 18-515. Anyone here to speak to that 23rd Amendment?
Seeing none, I'll move item 56.
All right. Item 56 been moved. We'll close the hearing. Any comments, anybody? Mr. Coleman?
Seven, yes.
Item 57 on land exchange agreement with the River Point West LLC for the exchange of real estate west of Southwest 11th Street between Tuttle Street and Dartway, and to continue to November 5 of 2018 at 5:00 PM. We'll open the hearing, but actually, the, this is a motion going to be asked to continue to November 5. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Seeing none, I'll move item 57.
All right. Let's close the hearing.
Seven, yes.
Item 58 on storage, storm drainage category D repair at 38th Street and Amick Avenue, 27th Street, Meek Avenue, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder is Synergy Contracting LLC, Jess Rogness, President, $196,025.20. Council communication number 18-529 is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open the hearing. Anybody here to speak about storm drainage category D repair? Anybody? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
It's, everything comes back to June 30, doesn't it?
Seems to.
Pretty, pretty hefty damage there, but I am pleased that we got, the bid came in under engineering estimates, that's good. And I noticed all the other bids in there seemed to round theirs off to the nearest dollar, but little bidder needed 20 extra cents. I just don't know how that happens, but-
He went by 20.
So, I'll move item 58 and 58A.
Item 59 on storm drainage category D repair contract. One, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Synergy Contracting LLC, Jess Rogness, President, $236,740 and bill 10 cents. Council communication number 18-530 is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open the hearing on this one. Anybody here to speak to this contract? Seeing none, let's close the hearing and ask-
I'll move item 59 and 59A.
All right.
I've got a dime over here. That'll help make that bid official.
Well, you're up to 30 cents, all right.
I know it. Better check my paycheck.
Seven, yes.
Is there HR?
Should be.
All right. Let's note that at 5:47, this ends the hearings and takes us back to communications and reports. Item 43. Item 43 is to receive and file communications from Neighborhood Revitalization Board regarding board role and responsibilities. Any discussion? Anybody in the audience? Any comments on this? Looks like there's none.
Wait a minute.
Let's, council, anybody?
Let's move to receive and file.
Why, I think, March, are you here to speak about this?
Well, I'm-
We don't have to speak on it. Okay.
The, the, the letter requests a joint meeting, and I, I think it's an important thing to do, given the strategy and the priority for neighborhood revitalization. I would suggest that we do it, and I, maybe somebody has information that I don't, but I mean, if the request is that we meet, I can't, I can't think of a reason not to, and I can't think of a better time than the next couple of weeks to do it.
All right. So, we'll refer to the manager to find an appropriate time to bring it up, and let's do it soon.
That would be great.
And-
Yep.
While they're here, at, at the risk of being a little bit of a broken record, but one of the things I'll want to discuss at this time, if we're revisiting a board, this is not one of the boards, I believe, that requires gender balance under state law, since this is a creation of the city. But I would hope that as, as we reconsider the, the nature of the board, that there's some consideration to make this a gender balanced board as well. And I don't know if that was part of the discussion earlier, but, but I would like that to be part of the council's discussion.
Yep. I think in good point, and I think that we've been working for about 10 years to try to get that accomplished, so keep on it, we'll, we'll get there.
Want me to move, receive and file?
Sure.
Refer back to the city manager?
Yep.
Love to do that, along with the rest of our comments.
Seven, yes.
Item 44 from Amy Baldwin of 204 3rd Street to speak regarding the 50/50 rule, restaurant versus bars and conditional use permits. Annie.
Here. Pass them out later on.
Let me make a motion, receive and file?
Yep.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, we received them.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Annie Baldwin, 204 206 3rd Street, Annie's Irish Pub. Currently, I have three locations in the Court District. I'm the vice president of the Court District. Behind me is Tom Demolik, he's the president, and Ted Holly, he has three bars in the Court District. I also have the St. Patty's Day Street Party, and I'm the person in charge of collecting and paying the Des Moines Off-Duty Police we use every summer. I'm here to discuss the 50/50 rule. When you are a restaurant, you are required to sell at least 50% food. I am here to protest council's action and the Board of Adjustments' action, which temporarily changed Tipsy Crow with a conditional use permit from a restaurant to a tavern. In 2017, the city of Des Moines approved my plans to build on the corner of Third and Court where Annie's is. It is a $2 million project. Previously, Annie's has been zoned as a tavern. To remain a tavern, I went through a very lengthy and expensive progress, process, and was completely upfront and forthright with the city staff and the Board of Adjustments. It's extremely important to point out here that I did this previous to moving one grain of dirt. I did not seek to save time and expense by misleading any city official. I have provided you with a binder with council video clips and the Board of Adjustment video clips. Now, I want to talk about the Tipsy Crow Tavern at 102 3rd Street. Before he expanded, the Tipsy Crow Bar owner never went to the Board of Adjustments for purpose of remaining zoned as a bar, like I did. He knew and admittedly was told that they would never approve digging up his parking lot and making a 10,000-square-foot patio that backs up to the railroad tracks. Instead, he would need to change his use to be a restaurant to allow that to happen. Let me repeat that. He was told, and he understood the city rule, that if he wanted to expand and build a huge patio bar, he would need to apply as a restaurant and run his business according to those rules. Tipsy Crow's bar owner, Mr. McFadden, came to the city council June 12 of 17, and there was suspicion that people had been trying to do their point of sys, or their point-of-sale systems to ring up drinks like a rum and coke for $5, charging $1 for rum and $4 for coke, with the coke going towards the food percentage. And then this was completely breaking the 50/50 rule. Councilman Coleman even brought up this scenario. On June 26, 17, McFadden came back and showed menus and promised everyone, Councilman Gotta was voting over the phone, that he was always going to be a restaurant, and he had no desire to be a bar. And Christine Hensley asked him specifically, what will he do if he doesn't make the 50/50 rule? And he said, well, I'll just come back in and ask to be a bar. And Mrs. Hensley said she would not approve it, and she advised him not to try that. Again, he was warned by Councilman Coleman and Hensley, including the fact that the ordinance would change to ensure restaurants followed the rules. In July of 17, Tipsy Crow opened. It opened with a dress code, security, DJs, people smoking on the patio, and they charged a cover charge, sometimes $20 a head to come in. No restaurant does that, only bars and dance clubs. Eventually, he went ahead and closed his kitchen and just had a food truck there. In June of 18, the city of Des Moines audits the Tipsy Crow. In July of 18, a month later, he goes to the Board of Adjustments with his landlord, Joe Capola, and said he would not succeed in meeting the 50/50 rule. He asked for a conditional use permit to go back to being a yard, a bar. That's right. He did exactly what he told you he was going to do in 2017, when you approved his liquor license, which the council told him not to do. I feel like the city council correctly and instinctively knew that this is what McFadden deliberately trying to manipulate the local laws and regulations to get what he wanted, an expansion and an enormous patio, that he knew he would not be allowed before he even leased this property. He may have just thought he could bully his way through the process and ask for forgiveness later. The difference here is council quizzed him through every step, because they suspected that that was the case. So, for McFadden to come back here to the Board of Adjustments and council a year later and cry ignorance, and that he tried to meet the rules, should fall on deaf ears. The rules need to be the same for everyone. I did it right, like most people do. He did not. At their July meeting, the Board of Adjust, Adjustments issued a four-to-one vote, which in part states Tipsy Crow Tavern needs to sell food, a full menu during business hours. There's video evidence in your binder, two days ago on Saturday, he closed his kitchen at 7:00 PM, and continued selling alcohol drinks through the wee hours. I believe that McFadden has manipulated the rules and misled this council and acted in bad faith. His moral character needs to be looked at, and this matter should be sent to your legal department immediately to see if his conditional use permit should be revoked. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody?
I've, I've spoken a lot about this particular situation and others similar to it. As you probably know, I've voted against it often, each time it's come up. I was very frustrated that, that we allowed the rules to be changed. Mr. McFadden took over a location that had been notoriously kind of a troubled spot, and, and the, the improvement of it is, is, is quite nice. I'm really happy that my adult children that are in their 20s now like to go to Annie's, which is a little place on Court Avenue, but they also like to go down there, and every time they go, I just get a stomachache, because I, I've been there and dropped them off- off, been their Uber on the way down, and they only take cash, they remind everybody that, that's coming in. This has gone on for months. I, I alerted our zoning officers the night I was down there that, that there's no way we'll be able to audit them, because they, they don't take anything but cash, and they were coming up against the wall. It is exceedingly frustrating. The, the owner's been granted other license in, in the, in the area as well, and I, I just, I've, I voted against it, but I'm part of the council and part of the city, and I just hate it when we get played. And this is a case where we got played. And so I think your suggestion that we refer it to the manager and the attorney, quite honestly, I don't know what the council's role is in trying to undo an action by the Board of Adjustment, but I assume that we have zoning enforcement opportunity, and we can insist that they produce the documentation and conduct business in a way that allows us to ensure that they're meeting the zoning Board of Adjustment's rules. Is that right?
But, we, yes, we can, we can ask for the information to show that they're meeting the, whatever the requirements were that the ZBA put on that particular permit.
Do we know what the comment, do we know what their conditional use permit is?
It's in your binder. You have a copy of it in your binder, and you also have evidence that he's closing his kitchen at seven. And my argument is, he didn't follow your rules, why is he going to follow the Board of Adjustment's rules?
And, and, Mr. Attorney.
To that, and I guess I'd like to refer to our city attorney. Well, as Ms. Coleman points out, I think that we have a level of frustration that they obviously appealed and went to the Board of Adjustment, and, but our, what is our recourse here? Our recourse is what, take it to court? I mean, if we found that they weren't?
Well, it would be to go back to the Board of Adjustment. At this point in time, there, they, whatever time there would have been a potential court process, it's gone, so we'd have to go back to the Board of Adjustment if the manager's office and their review and enforcement can find the facts that are being talked about here, whether or not they find facts and find that the permit is, that the behavior's inconsistent with the permit.
Okay, and, but, again, to Mr. Coleman's point, I think we're all frustrated, there's not much that this council can do to change the decision by zoning Board of Adjustment.
That's fair. Yeah, that's fair.
That's fair? It's not fair, but...
Fair statement.
No, because when it, when it came up, I knew that they weren't able to meet that fifty-fifty rule, because I had family members also go down there and know after nine o'clock that they only take cash. So to me, the specific questions that I, in their kitchen was closed, and I asked Mr. McFadden specifically, how late will your kitchen be open? And he sat, sat right there and told me, two o'clock in the morning, every time he was open.
That's correct.
And so, yeah, it's, it's real frustrating, and then his liquor license came up, and then we were told that he already had his conditional use permit, and we couldn't even audit or do anything. So he did skirt the system and go around it, so I'm hoping that the city manager and our zoning department can, can possibly send this back to the Board of Adjustment and let them know that, given the things that they, we asked him to do, he didn't do.
We can't revoke the conditional use permit? I thought we could.
No, I would think that the Board of Adjustment...
The Board of Adjustment can.
Yeah.
Right.
Did they have, did the Board of Adjustment have all these facts too? I mean, this is the first time hearing.
I'm not sure. I, I didn't.
You know, I wonder...
I didn't even know he went to the Board of Adjustment.
If you look at it, it didn't say McFadden or Tipsy Crow in the conditional use permits. It's Capola Enterprises. And I'm assuming Capola went and made the pitch, so if I was on Board of Adjustment and I didn't know this was Tipsy Crow, it's pretty deceptive to try and get a conditional use permit for your property, and you're not even running the restaurant or the bar. I'm, I, I think, I don't want to be deceived when this happens. And that's the, you know, the, I think Linda and I, we've seen a few of those come through, and, you know, if you can't say what your business is, then you're really trying to pull the wool over somebody's eyes, and that's, that's not the way we want to run a city. So...
Well, and back to the reality, they're quasi-judicial, and the recourse for us is not to, you can't, there is no recourse to us. We can't do anything about it.
Until he's up for renewal.
No, we really can't do anything.
We can send it back to Board of Adjustment.
The only thing the Board of Adjustment can get rid of is...
Under certain circumstances, we could do it.
There's nothing to send back to Board of Adjustment right now, but, but you could direct your staff to see whether there is, which is what you're...
I have a question on... Can I just, I'll let you go. But we have the ability to enforce the regulations that they put on there.
Absolutely.
So our zoning officers assume the responsibility for the enforcement of what they say, which, which to me, if they're violating that, we need to take action against it.
Absolutely. And we will. There, that's pretty simple.
But I think we've got to lay out the case.
Correct that a conditional use permit, I mean, when Bill and I sat on Board of Adjustment...
He won't.
Sue Ann would say, if it comes back to us as a complaint, we can always pull that conditional use. Wouldn't this be a complaint right here that...
Yeah, but we're getting ahead of the fact that this will have to be investigated substantially.
Sure.
So we just receive and file, and then have staff look into it and follow the process.
And we have received and filed this already, and accepted this. So we had to receive and file her additional comments and refer to staff for...
Potential enforcement.
Potential enforcement and update. Yes.
I'll make a motion along those lines. I've got one more question. I mean, this requires a liquor license, right?
Yes.
And a condition of a liquor license is good moral character?
Yes.
How would, if there's viol, I mean, the deceptive nature of this is concerning. I don't know if that meets the, meets a bar and good moral character, but if there's violation of, I mean, are there any violations? What, what would be a violation of good moral character, given this fact pattern? Like, would this...
Well, I don't want to get into commenting on this specific case. We'll, we'll do that at some point in time with, with respect to council. I, I am not familiar with this, other than her comments, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to say based on her comments.
Let me rephrase.
Okay.
I, I'd like us to look into the issue of good moral character as part of, as part of the investigation, not...
Argue my notes, yes, sir.
Okay.
If I can just make a comment to that, if you'll remember, we had the bar Triple Double that had multiple shootings there, and we did not have the ability to pull their liquor license. The Iowa State Liquor Commission, there's a commissioner, and we had residents who wrote letters to the commission and said, please, check into their moral character, and nothing happened. And that was going right to the state. Yeah.
One, one thing I can, one thing that I can tell council is that a while back, council did strengthen the city's definition of good, good moral character. So it's, it's broader, the, the state allows you to regulate based on good moral character. You've actually put a, a little bit of teeth into that and, and specified a little bit more than many other cities have in their code. And so we will be happy to take a look at that, look at this information, get whatever information the manager's office gets back, and, and then we'll communicate back with council based on our findings.
Okay.
Mayor, can I make one other general comment?
Absolutely.
Annie probably knows this. The regulations that we passed came out of the discussion about this and a couple of other problem areas. When staff take a look at ways that we might address those, we, we bumped up to some existing state laws and regulations, and the mayor and I have been asked to serve on a statewide, like, liquor license review deal in November. And so having the other issues that each of you are struggling with in your own neighborhoods and wards would be really helpful. I think they're doing like a four-hour afternoon, and then we come back a couple of days later to kind of look at recommendations. So anything you have, let us know, but I'm really pleased to be a part of that. And the conditions that the ZBA put on it are some of the things that we talked about that we couldn't legislate, but they could as a matter of the variance or exemption.
Well, and Annie, thank you for...
Thank you, big time.
Giving us this, and let's hope that everybody else that gives us information is this detailed, and it, it'll help us out a lot, having that discussion. All right, do we have a motion that needs to be voted on, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right, item forty-five, from Joe Grandinette of sixty-two fifteen Gordon Avenue to speak regarding bike paths to flooded homes and bike lanes in the East Village. Joe.
Mayor and city council people, my name is Joe Grandinette, six-two-one-five Gordon Avenue, Des Moines. Why am I here? I'm here because you have set aside almost a half a million dollars for a bike path when you had homes inundated with water, demolished, and so you're taking the bike paths precedent over taxpayers. That's a concern of mine as a citizen. The whole city was flooded June thirtieth, this isn't the first time it's been flooded, but bike path has to wait. You can do a lot of fixing sewer lines, storm sewers with a half a million dollars. In fact, I see two projects that were two thousand dollars, you could do two more projects and fix them sooner than later. So that's a concern of mine, that only one city council person voted it down. The rest of you voted in favor of it. Now, if we need to have more money for the city, for the bike pass, I'm going to come with a solution, I'm just not going to complain. In Oregon, all the bikers pay fifteen dollars. They have to have a license. I don't know what your new guru is for the, that has, does the bike pass now, you've hired someone, but this is a big expense for the City of Des Moines, bike pass. I don't know what your budget is for it, but I think the bike people want good bike pass, they should have a little skin in the game, and potentially, they should be charged, just like we got our bicycles. When I was growing up, you go to the fire station, you get a license. I think it's time that they get a little skin in the game, because we have the best bike pass in the country, but it surely can't take precedent over people that are losing their homes because of antiquated, outdated, outmoded storm sewers. That's my first phase. I trade on this, on the east side, I know several of the businesses there. You put the pylons out there, I don't know if it's the new guy decided this, but it's the most convoluted system that you could possibly set up, because all the businesses there along the east side are losing business, because you can't get in and out. It's dangerous, there's no parking, and when you park on the side there, if you open your car door, it's in the line of traffic. I don't know if any of you have gone over there. There have been two accidents, people have opened up their car door, and there have been some crashes. Luckily, nobody's gotten hurt. But the bike path that, that you have on the east side, on, from Pennsylvania, going west all the way to the bridge, with the pylons or white cones, I don't know what you call them, needs to be addressed, because businesses are losing money. They've all told me that. Business is down. Older people can't get in and out, there's no place to park. And I'm sure that Joe, if you had a business, or Frank, you have a business, and maybe they want to put him on Ingersoll, I don't know, but I will tell you, you will lose business, and it will be dangerous. I asked the UPS man there, he happened to come in at one of the places I was, because I, I went over a period of a month and walked around and talked to people. Once I found out about these, I wondered if they were, anybody liked them. Here comes the UPS man, and he says to me, well, you know, you ought to do this in the wintertime, trying to deliver a package to these businesses, there's two mounds of snow, and then the owner says that they push their snow out into the street, and then the snow comes back, and then the UPS guy goes, well, you know what, they got the bike pass, but the bike people don't ride on the bike pass, they go down the sidewalks on the east side, because it's wider, not much traffic, and it's safer for the bike people that, that drive the bikes there. So, in conclusion, I think you need to take a look at the East Village, someone needs to address that. You need to retrieve this half a million dollars that you're saving for whenever you want to build this bike path, I think it's on the north side, over in your area, someplace, and use that money to get these homes fixed with new stormwater sooner than later. Thank you.
Perfect timing.
You're a good man, Chris.
You're a good man, Joe. Thanks for coming down.
Any comment?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the comments, and I don't know if there's much to refer back to the city manager, but I'll refer any comments that, that need to be addressed to the city manager.
I do have a, I do have a business on Grand Avenue, it's at the State Historical Building, where the bike lanes are, just for the record.
Do they have the pylons?
Yes.
I, I think a solution to the pylons in the East Village are coming, quickly. A solution to, to, that was part of a pilot project, so we could kind of see what the lanes looked like, and I think everybody has opinions about the pylons, I do, but I think we're ready to replace those, not with new pylons, but to kind of new markings and get it going for the future. So...
And, and Joe, I'd like to, to your points on public safety, we have collected quite a bit of data, and I know there's a lot of people that have been over the last year or two, and the data that we're seeing is not, doesn't line up with what you're telling us. The data we're seeing is a huge reduction in, in traffic accidents. So I, you know, I'd like to get your data, and we'll turn it over to our staff, and let's have them throw that into the mix, and I'm sure you have times and dates and everything on there so that we can analyze it.
And possibly it, the, the accidents have, have stopped, but there is a danger now that people open the car door into the lane of traffic.
Mm-hmm.
That's my concern. I don't have, I just talked about, I went to different places.
No, no, if, if you've got data that, that shows that and incidents, because we're trying to collect that.
Right.
That's part of what we've been trying to do, because we've all been having a debate and a discussion about public safety and about all kinds of things, and of course, we had the same discussion on Ingersoll...
Right.
With the bike lanes, and going from four lanes to three lanes, one each direction with a turn lane, and whether or not that was going to put everybody out of business or not. And there were those that thought so. I mean, it was, as Mr. Coleman remembers, it was a rather rough discussion for a period of time, and I bet if you go out there now, that feeling is different.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Item forty-six, from Chase Home, twenty-one nineteen Southeast Eighth Street, to speak regarding various issues. All right, give us a motion to receive and file.
We'll move to receive and file.
Whatever he's given us here.
Packet of information he has.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We received. Thank you.
All right. Chase?
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I'm Chase Home, current resident of Des Moines, and formerly deployed with the U.S. Army for a number of years. So as I look at the current composition of the council, I see former board members, lawyer, a realtor, and a few businessmen, but what I do not see are veterans, first responders, ethnic minorities, renters, or hourly wage workers.
I've got to make one... I've got to make one veteran.
Veteran?
Thank you.
Thank you. Cool.
Go ahead.
All right, Jess, cross that one out. Therefore, I would like to explain how a few changes to our election process could create a more representative council of city's current composition, as well as why we should add a vice mayor to our, to oversee the nightlife. It's a current issue today, I heard. So, we currently utilize a council that is composed of two at-large districts, which is the least representative form, and four single-member districts with win or take-all voting, which does not allow for diversity. And similar to Congress and the Senate, it could lead to pork barreling within those districts. I would like to propose three districts with two counselors from each, elected by a plurality of voters. That's broken down in the handout that I gave you. This would allow for a greater diversity, both in terms of gender, race, geographical area, economic background, and, most importantly, ideological. This would also create more civility within those election periods, since there is a great chance of working together post-election. These factors would in turn lead to a greater voter turnout than the usual less than ten percent, I believe. So, an example of that would be, is if four of us were running, let's say, the third district. I receive forty percent, Mr. Mandelbaum receives thirty percent, Mr. Gatto receives twenty, and the mayor is running, for some reason, as a counselor for ten percent. I have, let's say I'm, I'm running to help the homeless, he's running to increase businesses in his area. So, let's say that's a minority ideology. Well, that minority ideology would now come to fruition and be allowed to have a voice with on the city council. So, that's, that's that portion of the city council. The vice mayor, also known in Amsterdam as the Nightmare, established in two thousand and eleven, and the club commissioner, as of this year, New York City, established one. This may be elected or selected. They may vote, it's up to you. I have a balance for that because that brings us up to eight currently. That's, we need to have nine to break that vote. We may create a board of advisors. I'll leave that up to you, if you choose to do this. Now, since nightlife has the opportunity to create a more diverse, culturally inclusive city, and to expand a young, engaged, creative populace, that's why I think the nightmare or the vice mayor would be important, some of that looks over the night, the nightlife. The duties of this vice mayor would include, but are not limited to, compiling a report on how to expand the nightlife, improve conditions for nightlife workers and patrons, analyze how to reduce alcohol, violence, investigate the, the effects of zoning laws, manage noise and trash nuisances, and make conditions easier for artists and smaller-scale night businesses. So, if you decide to allow this vice mayor to vote, we could balance that out by having a singular at-large council member that would overlook the entirety of the city, like the mayor does. This person would, could be a veteran or first responder, allowing, this would show that the city of Des Moines respects the sacrifices and services of our community's uniform protectors. All right. So, in conclusion of this, I'll leave you with a quote from the current mayor, Mayor Frank County. "If we just think from the same sources that we've always thought, and we get our information from where it's always come, probably we're not going to get all the ideas that are out there to solve the problems." Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. I will move to receive and file his comments.
All right. Very good.
Thanks, Chase.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilman Gray has tried to convince me that he is the club commissioner.
I thought I was, but I don't know what happened.
Sounds like a good time, don't it?
I'm the one that's out the longest.
The city has the nightmare.
Do they? Is it called such?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Amsterdam needs one, I'll tell you that. They've got some interesting stuff going on there.
But the idea is that, I mean, it's along the lines of what Chase was talking about, but to address issues that are unique to the city life at night and to have someone, it's, I think, a staff position. So, the idea is that it's part of...
Interesting.
Part of the job description.
Maybe you and I ought to be the staff person that takes care of that, Josh.
The, the only thing I'm doing at night is bedtime with my kids.
Joe, Chase, thank you for your service. Appreciate it, not only from me as a veteran, but also our city manager as a veteran as well, so...
I read you guys' bio, I didn't see that on there. Wikipedia's got it wrong.
National Guard, two-thirty-four signal.
First one, six-eight.
Fantastic.
Red Bull.
Eleven B.
Red Bulls? Yeah, nice. Yeah, I'm out of the Ames Unit. I'm, I run the gunery crew, actually, head to Fort McCoy this week.
We're Communications.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item forty-seven from John Wilson of forty-two twenty-five Fleury Drive to speak regarding misapplication of impound procedures.
Mr. Mayor, council, John Wilson, forty-two twenty-five Fleury Drive. The city of Des Moines utilizes impound procedures for numerous reasons, such as to abate public nuisances, for safety reasons, abandoned vehicles, and even seizures in police investigations. When property such as a motor vehicle is impounded, there are procedures in place which, in most cases, allow the rightful owner to recover their car. This usually requires the owner to go to the police department, pay fee to obtain a release document, which they then take to a private towing company, which is contracted by the city, to provide towing and impound storage for city departments. In some situations, the city department, such as police, may decide to seize a vehicle in order to search it at a later date or for other investigative purposes. In such situations, the police will typically place a hold on the vehicle, meaning that no release documents will be issued to the respective, to the owner until the officer responsible for seizing the vehicle decides to authorize a release. The officer can simply claim there is a pending investigation with no accountability to anyone, or the officer may simply inadvertently forget to lift the hold. Meanwhile, the property owner is saddled with a hefty bill, which really is because the property owner is expected to pay the privately contracted impound agent for the costs of towing and storage. Another common example is if a person suspected of driving under the influence is pulled over by police and subsequently arrested, the person's vehicle is usually impounded in order to get off the public roadway as a matter of public safety. And immediately, the person finds they must pay for the tow and storage, even if they're later found to be totally innocent of the crime. This is inherently unfair and flies in the face of the notion that all persons in our country are innocent until proven guilty. And even in a situation where a city inspector believes a vehicle is parked on a private property, is somehow in violation of a city ordinance, unlicensed, not running, not roadworthy, et cetera, this determination is subject to review. And yet, before the limited measure of due process, which is afforded in such situations, can even run its full course, the rightful owner finds themselves having to pay for towing and impound fees, and a simple belief by a city inspector that a vehicle does not run can be a basis for impound procedures to begin. And a homeowner should never be forced to prove that his private property or private vehicle does in fact run. In any of these examples, city employees, through the course of their duties, unilaterally impose considerable financial burdens on citizens. In situations where a city employee places a hold on a vehicle, the result can be a bill well into the hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. If the rightful owner finds he or she is unable to pay the cost of towing and storage, the impound contractor then typically sells the vehicle to recover these costs. So, the citizen, whether they have been adjudicated to have committed any wrongdoing or not, can potentially lose his or her vehicle, another inherently unfair practice. That said, some possible solutions I've considered. One, as a public service for the people of Des Moines, a very low-cost outdoor parking lot suitable for storage of vehicles, RVs, et cetera, could help to remedy the problems of public nuisance abatement, providing homeowners a low-cost alternative for storing their vehicles when they have no garage available. In situations where a city employee places a hold, delaying the issuance of an impound release, there needs to be a greater degree of accountability, perhaps a system where the officer or other employee must provide clear and articulable reasons for failing to release the vehicle. A simple electronic and publicly accessible form could be used to help avoid unnecessarily driving up the costs for property owners. And to avoid situations where an officer may accidentally forget to issue a release or lift a hold, a very strict rule requiring an officer to notify police impound that a hold no longer remains could be put in place. Anyway, finally, the city could provide for towing and storage itself, possibly eliminating the need for public, or rather, private contractors altogether.
And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions, council? Anybody? No? Thank you.
Up to your comments.
John, thanks for coming down.
I'd make a motion to receive and file and refer to the city manager for appropriate follow-up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven yes.
All right. Thank you all for attending. That's the last item on our agenda for this evening. And unless anybody has objection, let's adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.